He's not a lot of people.
So. I have enough.
This is all part of that.
Yeah.
My kids are watching me wear my money left, right, left, right. I watched that on the way home from Arizona. Well, this is cute.
I haven't seen the new ones. I was like, you're watching the new movie? They're like, we didn't know you had to see it.
Well, and also Barbie movies out on in on Amazon, so you can watch that, too.
Well, I did my whole family. I didn't know what it was about. I was like, I guess we'll see Barbie. And I was like, so good.
I know. I was like, I told my kids, I was like, let's go see a movie. Let's go Barbie. And they were like, no. So I haven't been able to go see it yet.
Well, it just wasn't what I expected. I didn't know what to expect. So I was like, oh.
This is not just about Barbies.
No. I always think funny. It was like intense, man.
Okay, that works. It's been good.
Well, you made it backwards.
Yeah. Luckily, I knew where I was going. And remembered why I went.
I made that decision in my head before.
Yeah, I remember my pocket. I had something in my trunk for Lyle, a big old cooler. Yeah, it wasn't in my spot, was it?
Okay, like to bring this meeting to order. Welcome you all here tonight for uh city council meeting, September twenty first, twenty twenty three. Um, we're gonna start things off with an opening ceremony. Katie's gonna lead lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And David's gonna pray for us.
Will you rise and repeat after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity to gather this evening to address the issues of Far West City. We ask as we do so that we'll be led and guided by thy spirit and be able to deal with the business of the city and and be able to move the business affairs of the city forward. We're grateful for those who serve, the first responders, the military, and we ask you to watch over and protect and especially care for those families where we can where we can step in and out, uh in addition to that. We're grateful for the freedoms we enjoy, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, David. Okay, next part of our agenda is reports and comments. We start off with public comments. So if there's anybody who would like to come up and address and ask questions, or you just comment to the city council, please come up and do so. None. Okay. Report from planning commission, Madam Chair.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, last week, we started off with a work session to continue our M one C two revisions. We've kind of gotten bogged down, so we're back to that for a couple more work sessions. Then we went and moved forward, having a public hearing and approved finally the patio home ordinance. And I think we called it the senior housing residential zone. So we're done with that. You'll see that tonight. And then that will officially check that box for all of our moderate income. So, okay, then we moved on to preliminary subdivision approval for Far West Business Park. Um, and this is subdivision, not site plan. Then we had. Let's see, if we took site plan off. Okay, then we denied a site plan request, or sorry, not site plan, a sign site plan request for the insurance agency over here. And then we finally moved forward the A one and the A one R um revisions to the ordinance. So you'll see both of those, the patio home and the A one tonight that are finally done. So um, I think that's it. That's all I have.
Questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all your.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, and I know Katie came up to me tonight, but you can always call or email me throughout the week with questions on site plans, subdivisions, how we got in front of you. So. Thank you.
Before you leave, our next item is assignments and direction for the planning commission. So is there any new assignments or direction for the planning commission? You're off the hook this time. Hey, next item, consider approval of minutes dated September seventh, twenty twenty three.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of September seventh, twenty twenty three.
I'll second that.
Hey, Katie and Boyd are motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item, consider approval of bills dated September twentieth, twenty twenty three.
I'll make that motion to approve the bills.
Okay, Boyd and Janelle are motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to paying the bills? Okay, passage unanimously. Okay, onto our business items. Consider approval of business licenses. We have four business licenses coming up, so uh we'll go through them, starting with T E K System Solutions. Scott? Now, come on up. And just explain things so that they know what's going on and.
Yeah, it's just a estimating consulting and installation company for low voltage systems.
Out of your home.
Okay, questions, concerns?
Do my soapbox, but um when we allow businesses in residential neighborhoods, we want to make sure that that doesn't change the look of the residential neighborhood with traffic, with signage, with anything like that. We want it to.
Yeah, and I I have had a conversation uh with someone about that. This is a, this will be a temporary location. Uh, so yeah, and I understand the impact that vehicles and signs would make in a residential location. So that's that's not part of this. That'll that'll be down the road. Yeah.
Okay.
We'll make a motion that we approve the business license for tech system solutions.
I'll second.
Hey, Dave and Katie, your motion is second. We'll roll call this. Janelle?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. Hey. I want to pronounce this correctly. It looks like it says Con Man.
Yeah, that's correct.
Con Man Creative LLC.
Everybody remembers.
Eric Khan. Okay, but it's with two N's, so that's 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 different. So. Yeah.
Yeah, so I do freelance writing uh for gun magazines, NRA publications, guns and ammo. Uh, just basically working from my home from a computer. So should be low residential impact.
So I noticed on the app it said FFL, though. Are you?
Oh, yes, that's correct.
Transfers?
You're gonna receive and do transfers?
Yeah, basically the transfer, the the company will send me the firearm. We review them and then send them back.
Okay, so no retail?
No, there's zero retail on our.
You will have people coming to pick those up and.
Uh, it's usually just UPS. Uh, and then we, I do drop off at the UPS facility. So.
Like, you're not having customers come to your home?
No. No.
Hey.
We'll make a motion that we approve the business license for Con Man Creative.
I'll second.
Hey, Dave and Josh are motion and second. Dave?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Okay, sounds unanimous to me. Thank you. Wasatch La Salle Adventure Rentals LLC. Brady?
Yep.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Hey, so.
So I just ran a side by side. And uh uh you've probably seen it parked out here on two thousand west. So that's.
Is that your location? Is that?
Yeah, that's where I currently live, but it's probably gonna be six to eight months when I move. So it'll be temporary.
Okay, questions, concerns?
I want to remind you of some of the, one of the terms of the residential business license applications is that there's no signs advertising on the premise. And so just keep that in mind. I know I've driven past there and seen some advertisements for that on ATV there. So that's um that's not allowed within this license.
So what, how can I? Is there a way to?
Put it out on KSL or Marketplace or someplace that would, you know, do your marketing there, but.
I mean, and yeah, because there's no sign approval for a residential business.
Because there's no signs.
That's not zone commercial.
What is that zone commercial?
I don't know, is it?
I mean, you do have Sunbelt Rental. I mean, I think there's six houses on my side of the road right there. It's not necessarily a neighborhood. I wouldn't consider it a neighborhood.
So I guess what's.
How does that work?
If he puts a sign on that, is that considered?
I mean, I can.
Violation of that ordinance?
Because it's, if it's on the trailer that's mobile, that gets moved frequently.
It's actually in the state right away, too.
Well, if it's if it's on mobile on the trailer, I don't think it violates the same ordinance.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Then I'll make the contingency that the uh the sign has to stay on the trailer.
That work for you?
Is that also a motion?
I was gonna say.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Katie and Dave are motion and second. Janelle?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Okay, sounds like you got your weight. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Cave, the final business license, aesthetics by Eliza.
Hi, so I want to do aesthetic injections, like neuromodulator, dermal filler, and vitamin injections. Over at the Rand Company Salon, they have a room that has like a sink and closed door and everything. Um, so that's it.
Okay, so it's within a.
Business.
Business already. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the business license for aesthetics by Eliza.
I'll second.
Hey, Dave and Josh are motion second. David?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, set a public, the next item is set a public hearing to consider the request of a residential facility for persons with a disability for Northeastern Services located at sixteen thirty one West Hairsville Road. Is there anyone here to, oh, and there he, if I look up from reading, there you are. Um, we're we're just setting a public hearing, but it doesn't hurt for our consideration of setting that to understand what's.
And it I it wouldn't be a facility. Not not a, that's a wording. It wouldn't.
I think maybe that's a legal definition.
Ours is typically a home for people with disabilities without treatment. It's not a facility. Okay, okay, sure. Okay.
Okay, so expand a little bit.
Just a home uh for people with special needs, just to help them live independently within the community like the rest of us. Um, you know, they do have staffing to help them, but um, you know, that's about the the gist of it. Um, you know, staff help them with safety, um, health, you know, cooking, different things like that. Um, but the overall goal is just to help them live in the community like we all do.
Is this just right in front of Chuggs, Gary?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And does someone like live there with them?
No, no, it's just staff just rotated it.
Oh, okay, just like unshift, but they don't live there. Okay.
So how many people would be in the house?
Um, four.
And there's an apartment on that property. Is that apartment going to also be used?
Um, no, not not for our uses.
For your use. So it's the house, the main house?
It's the main house.
Okay, looks like everyone's asked a question except Katie. Don't you have a question?
Throw it at me.
We're setting a public hearing. I'll save them for later.
Okay, so yeah, this is about the public, setting the public hearing, but that helps feed into whether we want to set one. So I'll consider a motion to set a public hearing.
What date uh do you think we're October fifth, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, first, first meeting in October, October.
I'll make a motion. We set a public hearing to consider a request of the residential facility uh for Northeastern Services uh for the date of October fifth.
I'll second.
Hey, Dave and Janelle are motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, public hearing has been set, so.
Same time?
Yes, on October fifth, be here with whatever you need to to help explain to any of the public that will be here to ask even more questions than these guys did.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next item is consider final approval of the Ben Loman Business Park subdivision located at fifteen west, twenty three fifty north, Black Pine. Sure, we've got somebody here from those guys. So this is the final of the subdivision, right?
Good evening, Daniel.
Seems like you've been here before.
I have, I have, yeah. So this is just the subdivision plot and then the site plan approval. You'll see hopefully next meeting.
Okay, any questions about this? So the subdivision is basically, one parcel is north of the proposed road and the other one is south of the proposed road. Is that?
Yep.
That's the simplest terms of the whole thing?
Just a logistical question. And knowing that that street going in there, half of it's maintained by, or half of it is owned by Weber County, and then the back half is owned by Far West. How does like maintenance and snow removal of that work for that little section that belongs to us?
Yes, we're gonna find out. Or either we'll have to.
Do you know the answer to that?
No, it's there, the city engineer and the county engineer are gonna work together to figure out who's gonna do it, but it's a public street.
It's gonna be a public street. If we need to flower, then then we'll plow. We would, we would.
Because there was a discussion that.
But there was also discussion that it would be privately, that they would have a private company flower from the intersection in the county. But if if the agreement is that we do it, then we would probably just do it to the intersection of the county.
And that's something, Geneva, that would we spell that out in the the site plan or?
Um, yeah, we can tighten those up in the site plan.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, so the city, yeah, yeah.
It will be our street, yes. But this is just the subdivision itself, so.
Yep. I'll make a motion that we um give final approval of the Ben Loman Business Park subdivision.
Second up.
Okay, Katie and Boyd are motion and second. We'll roll call this. Janelle?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Okay, that sounded unanimous to me. So congratulations on your subdivision.
Thank you.
We'll see you next time. Same channel. Okay, consideration and action on preliminary approval of Far West Business Park subdivision located at twelve forty six North two thousand west, Jordan Watson. I think I've seen you before, too. Hey, you want to elaborate a little bit so that the public and the council know?
Sure. So this is to subdivide the home that we just rezoned to C two uh back into the larger parcel that we own to the south, so that we can have four uh individual parcels to build our four different commercial buildings on.
Yeah, because we just rezoned that, so this could happen, huh?
You did.
Okay.
Yep.
If we've been through this enough, and I'd make a motion that we.
You would, or you are?
I will make a motion that we approve the Far West Business Park subdivision.
I'll second.
Okay, Boyd and Josh are motion and second. David?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Sounds unanimous to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's preliminary, of course. So we'll see you again soon. Consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty three dash eleven. Amendments to the zoning ordinance of Far West City establishing a senior housing residential zone. Do we need input or any more talk about this or clarification?
I have one question.
Okay.
Do we need to amend our general plan to include or reference this zone?
No, not yet, because right now our general plan kind of encompasses, it doesn't mean we couldn't, but we don't have to, because we have basically this R that means residential.
Okay.
And if somebody came in with, whether it's um A one R, R one fifteen, or any other R zoning, that would probably fit within R. As it is right now, that doesn't mean we couldn't.
Sound like a pirate.
R, but it doesn't mean we couldn't get more granular in our general plan, but we don't have to, but that's a future discussion.
So that brings up a question I have. Does this not fit somewhere? I mean, are we trying to keep this out of certain locations?
I don't think so.
So then, yeah, why would we designate it then?
We had that discussion at the work session that we had jointly. Exactly. That was a place that we didn't see it fit, and we really decided that.
So if that's the situation.
Right. I'm just saying, we could, if we chose to.
Would we if we're not trying to?
Right.
Shoot horned into a certain locations.
Right.
Okay.
So I will make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty three dash eleven amendments to the zoning ordinance for the senior housing residential zone. Second.
Okay, Josh and Dave are motion and second. Janelle?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Josh?
Hey.
David? Sounds unanimous to me. So we have now, uh, I don't want to call it checking a box, but we have satisfied once again, another one of our um moderate income housing strategies. So that's good. We'll have, that'll be something we can put on our report next year. So. That's a good thing. Okay, consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty three dash twelve. Amendments to the conditional uses in the A one and A one R zones. Any further discussion, questions, or anything on this? I know we've been.
I'm pretty satisfied.
Playing pickleball with this one for a while.
Yeah.
Did we approve the sign one last week, last meeting? I can't remember the signage?
Two changes were made. We enlarged the sign. And we said only one sign per residence. Those were the two changes.
So we don't, and I don't think we have this.
In this?
Yes, it's in this one.
There's, there's two pieces to this. There's, there's a part that goes to the sign requirements in the residential zone. Okay, that's one part. And then there's the other piece that fits right into the.
Okay, I I only ask that because last time was on the agenda as two items.
No, we just have one on the agenda. We just have the conditional use piece. We don't have the sign ordinance.
Okay, but the conditional use piece makes reference to the other part of the ordinance.
Yeah, the seventeen fifty six zero five zero.
There, there's an additional statement there that talks about signs, specifically signs for this purpose.
So do we need to table this until we have both of those on the agenda?
I think this takes care of both of those.
Yeah, the other one's already.
Liam? I'm gonna look to Liam, because he wrote all this stuff. So.
We'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead. I'll make the motion. We approve ordinance number twenty twenty three dash twelve.
Okay, Dave and Boyd are motion and second. David?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Unanimous. We now have this ordinance in place. Okay, next on the agenda, consider approval of the thirty one hundred north storm drain realignment project. Nate, you want to come up and be prepared to answer any questions? And maybe even explain it a little bit?
Uh, so thirty one hundred north drain project is to uh redirect a main drain that comes through the city to uh allow better flow. Um, and this will, this will improve the flow from Mia Meadows clear down to um the end of the line in Plain City by the school by Silver Ridge. So um, the reason why we want to uh create more flow is because there's a section that is rarely restricted. It's a thirty inch um pipe that thirty six inch pipe that it has roots in it, and we cannot clean it. The only other way to do it is to to rip out a barn, uh about a dozen trees and a bunch of backyards, so.
Okay, any further questions or details on this?
It's, all the work is just in the, would just be in the roadway, right?
No, so uh the first part of the project will consist of the roadway. So we'll cross the road, um hopefully get asphalt down before the end of the season. And the rest goes between two houses and then um through Eric Ward's back property. That's, that's the railroad effect.
And that will come in next year?
No, it'll, it'll be this year.
To the cul-de-sac and then across, is that?
No, uh, it won't go through the cul-de-sac. So um, we we avoided that because there's so many utilities, so much sewer and and water lines and stuff, so.
And and without too much of a spoiler, this will also increase our capacity for what is going to be draining upstream. For instance, JDC Ranch and some of those other things that feed into it, you know, we have.
We we did meet with uh the folks with JDC Ranch this morning. Um, they are going to do some more enlargement of that, that same canal um with their project to increase capacity um for stormwater, so.
Because right now, that's what backs up a lot of that stuff. But luckily, most of it's field.
So right now, it's backing up uh the Mia Meadows and the Hart's ponds more than it should um because of the restrictions that it's.
And then all of that will happen in the easement that's currently there, right?
Yeah, we did, we did get uh an easement, uh kind of a work easement uh with the residents to allow us to do it and we'll, we'll compensate them for any damages that we make to their property, so.
And I see that we have um also in our packet a um contract toward the three XL. Um, you've met with them, you feel good about?
Yeah, so we uh, we had our engineer do some background checks on them, um some references. Uh, they, they've done similar work, but not the exact work, but uh they are qualified, they are licensed, they uh and and they are the the lowest price, so. Yep.
So do we approve one before the other, or do we approve them both at the same time?
What do you mean?
Well, do we need to? I guess we don't really need to approve the contract, do we?
Well, it's kind of all part of the project.
Yeah.
So. Unless somebody wants to separate it out. Um. Okay, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the thirty one hundred north storm drain realignment project.
Second.
Hey, Josh and Dave are motion and second. Janelle?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Okay, looks like we're gonna be putting in some pipes.
Well, and we're, we're glad to hear that because we uh were anxious of this winter and next spring, seeing, seeing if we can flow water better.
So for what it's worth, I I I've seen in action these guys when uh earlier this year, when there was a lot of water in that area, they were actually they were sucking water out of one man hole and letting it go down to another just to bypass an area that just wasn't letting it flow.
We, we had an auger in a manhole trying to cut roots, and it it's a, it was a five thousand dollar auger that Pro Pipe had, and it got stuck. Because the roots were too big, so uh.
Did we buy an auger?
We, we fished it out. We didn't want to buy an auger.
Okay, I was wondering, did we buy something?
So who got that job? Who got, who got that job?
Well, we all did. We're all, we, we had the backhoe out there pulling the the hose and slowly, the hose stretched another. Well, we all did. We're all, we, we had the backhoe out there pulling the hose, and slowly the hose stretched another two hundred feet, more than it was.
I want you to listen to stories. These, this is what these guys do all the time, so. All the time, and all hours of the day, even when they don't want to. Okay, you're gonna stay up here for the next one, too, I'm gonna guess. Consideration, consider approval of Public Works Facility Phase Two Building Storage Building, Vehicle Storage Building. We're not.
So this is the second phase of our facility, our campus over there. This would probably be the smallest phase of the three that we have. It's just a building to hold our snowplow equipment, our backhoe, whatever we need. We're running out of space in our, right now where we're at. Everything's outside, it's, it's very unsecure. So we're, we're just gonna have this put in there, and we'll have it locked up with doors and be nice to have.
One question I had was, you don't see those very often, but the bids came in substantially less than the engineer's estimate. Is, what's the reason between the, the big discrepancy?
So we, we asked the same.
Not that I'm complaining.
No, no, we asked the same question. We have never worked with Patriot Construction before, and we did the same thing. We, we got the references. It took us a week to get references with that, for them. The, I think the other contractors kind of made it more of a project than it really is, because it's just a building and a little bit asphalt. There's no other, there's no underground utilities or anything. So they, they just had the better price. I think they had a direct contact with the building supplier, so they, they were able to to get the building a little bit cheaper.
And how many square feet are we talking here, Nate?
Um, I think it was fifty by hundreds, like five thousand square feet roughly. I, without having to plan in front of it, all open inside. Uh, so there's doors, yeah, all open, it's just an open shop area, yep.
And again, you're thinking Patriot, going with Patriot.
Hey, any, any more questions of Nate?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Public Works Facility Phase Two.
I'll second.
Hey, Dave and Josh are on top of these tonight. Let's vote, vote on this. Janelle?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Okay, looks like we're gonna build us a continued project here.
We'll be starting shortly. Thank you.
Hey.
Thanks, Nate.
Thanks, Nate. Okay, the next discussion, I threw this on because we've been talking with our, and we, we've talked about this a few times. And in one of our staff meetings, I was asking Horton about this. He's not here tonight. I was gonna have him kind of talk about it some more. We can talk about it a little bit. I asked him, because, you know, the flock cameras, they capture things, the people finding throughout the camera, it's consistent throughout what everybody, other cities doing, and I think we have one within the city that the county paid for. And I was asking Mark, what he recommended, the lieutenant, and he was one or two more, like one on four thousand north. Well, not on four thousand north, but actually out by Smith and Eders, we know who's coming in, actually into the county. And then one on eighteen, or West Harrisville Road, to see, you know, so they can track. In Plain City, I think they have a half a dozen.
And where's the one we currently have?
I, I'm, I think he said it's out on four thousand.
I think it's in the corner of four thousand and where you go into. Norwell My, I can't, I don't know, thirty-one twenty-five, or are you going to My subdivision?
Hey, there might be one there as well. Plain City has a few, but you know, they're able to track and if you want to wait, well, we don't have to take action yet, or we can take action saying, yeah, let's purchase some.
This is going very well over the overall community.
Yeah.
And it would be nice to be a bigger part of that. I, I really think that we should find money in the budget to get a.
What are the costs, though? Really, no?
Um, it's kind of a subscription type thing, so it's like, I think, I remember somebody saying something along twenty-five hundred a year.
Per camera?
Per camera.
And then how are they monitored? Who monitors them?
Um, they go through whatever the flock system is, and the sheriff's department has access to that, and so. I wish Mark was here, he describes it very well, but basically if they tell the system to look for a red Toyota, for instance, it'll find a red Toyota, and then every camera that sees a red Toyota, they'll be able to track. License plate, there's.
Helps on amber alerts, helps on.
I'm assuming.
But they can only do it if, like, they can't, once again, it's one of those systems where they have to say, oh, we have a red Toyota that's violated something, then they can put it in. They can't just sit and monitor the cameras.
I was just wondering if they, if they're recorded, though?
Yes.
Yeah, so they can go back in time.
Does it help, does it, is it used at all for like speed, speed enforcement or just?
Um, I don't, I don't think it has like a, like I said, I wish Mark was here. He could tell us more about it, but he could definitely follow.
Criminal mischief.
Yeah, so it helped when they were finding somebody who, there was an arson out in Plain City. They were able to find the culprit on that. So those types of things.
I don't, I don't know how we approve this until we find out if we have funding for it.
Okay.
Right, I think a little more information on, you know, yeah, fun, like what the costs are, and maybe even a demo, like a demo or.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask Mark for that. I kind of blindsided him a little bit to see, because I thought he was gonna be here, and he usually has a really good, you know, in-pocket presentation on it. And, but he's at some conference for the sheriff's department.
And I think, you know, if we can find that, those bits of money, I think it's very useful for the community.
Probably somewhere in your budget, huh? Public safety.
We have, you have a budget?
Yeah.
Well, we have, we have.
Wait a sec.
Well, it, it's one of those things, it could be argued that those types of things can actually o- over time reduce costs because if we're able to use technology to find, you know, culprits, then we don't have to hire or retain as many sheriffs. You know? Someone else would have to explain that, but that's something I heard when I went to one of those meetings, and I'm sure Boyd will expand on some of that when he reports on his assignments. Okay, so we had a discussion. We're not taking any action until we know more, and that's fine. Okay, next one, one of our favorites, consider res- approval of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh five canceling the November twenty twenty-three local municipal election. So we're doing this because there are three openings, we have three candidates, and we're allowed to cancel. Right, Lindsay? We're able to cancel the election, and all three of them are here this evening. We actually had a, a meeting that will never happen again because, you know, it would be a quorum after they're in, but we had a discussion. I gave them some books on, you know, land use and whatnot, and we talked a little bit about potential assignments. So any discussion, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero five.
Josh and Boyd are motion and second. I think we can do this with all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or no, it's a resolution, we have to do it, roll call. Sorry, I just saw the resolution word. David?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Now we have everybody in roll call. Okay, I heard a unanimous thing through there, so we're on to our very favorite part. May your council follow, so report on assignments. Who wants to go first?
I do.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, Katie, please start us off.
I have a few things. Um, first, I want to recognize that Lindsay's back. It's good to see you and have you back. Um, and she has an adorable little baby girl, so I got to see pictures of it. I was like, go here next time, I'll just hold her. Um, uh, okay, let's, I'll start with Park Committee. We met on Wednesday, and Lindsay, we met with the Utah Youth Soccer Association, so they are a statewide association that's divided into regions. They're, we, our area is Weber County, some of Davis County are in Region Two. They collect forty dollars per player per year for what they call their field development fund. Um, and that is meant to be spent on facilities that keep kids playing soccer locally instead of having to travel out way far away to play soccer. Um, so they reached out to us and just kind of full disclosure, Matt Robertson, who's our city engineer, is also on the board of this organization, and said, hey, we've, you know, we've been Nate aware of this. We have some money in our, in this trust account that we need to invest in developing some playing fields in the area, and we'd be interested in meeting with you. So we met with them Wednesday, and this was the kind of high-level conflict plan that they presented to us there, and we had some back and forth discussion and talked about kind of what they would need to make this feasible for them, and what, you know, what would work best for the city and for the use for this property, and they were talking about ma- needing like a lease of twenty-five years to make this financially feasible when, and to be, you know, their return on investment for them. They're open to discussing, discussing the terms of that, whether it's a ten-year lease with options to renew after that. So I'll bring you in, Liam, for some questions and some follow-up there. So what they have here is three fields. They would manage, and they would construct and oversee the scheduling of the three, three hundred by two hundred fields. And then we talked about keeping this kind of center strip that has the pavilion, playground, restrooms. This middle strip, and with the inclusion of this seven by seven field, would kind of ma- be maintained and constructed by the city, so that would be, that would still remain within like the city's purview. Um, the soccer association would then just have kind of priority rights to book and schedule and operate on those three larger fields there. Um, let me find my notes.
Katie, you have a question about this. So, so most of, most of the kids in our city are playing SWAT. So how does that affect that?
So they had, I can't find my notes. They have something like.
Work in statewide, and a third are working K'sville.
Yep, a third of their membership is from in this area.
So why not some of the VR citizens that are playing here? It's just that group.
I, and I, I remember, I remember hearing that SWAT belonged to this larger Utah youth soccer organization, so that is encompassing of this, but I, I can confirm with that.
Yeah, all, all the soccer leagues are part of the UISA.
Okay.
So.
I just want to make sure that we're not.
Who'd use this?
I mean, that we're getting use from the people.
From our citizens.
Yeah, from our citizens.
Yeah. Yeah, so they, they, so their season basically goes from September or August to October. Lyle, help me out, and then from, in, in the spring until Memorial Day.
Yeah.
So they're requesting just, and it's weekend games, and so they're requesting just kind of like prime use of that, but then it would be open use for the public to use without, we wouldn't be able to schedule it, but if somebody in the neighborhood wanted to come and practice there, or, you know, have a drop-in game, and it was outside of the, you know, those scheduled hours, they would allow that. Um.
So what does their lease, what are the terms of their lease including, other than they're gonna construct the three primary fields? But yeah, what, what are the other deal points?
They also do the restroom and the parking?
No, we talked about that, and we had some thoughts of the city would cover installing the utilities and bringing the utilities into there. We would cover the, they can't cover a playground, their insurance won't, won't cover them, so we would have to construct that and oversee it. We would construct and oversee the pavilion and the, I can't remember, restrooms, did we? They would do the restrooms.
Parking, if I remember.
Mm-hmm, so we indicated that the parking had to be paved. It couldn't just be a, you know, gravel lot. So they would, you know, basically they would kind of seed and grade everything, get the site prepped.
Even in between in the, you know, between fields, I mean, obviously this is a layover of that plot, but they would plant around the restrooms and have grass and all that.
I think that was the understanding.
Yeah, and then you would put a trail in around the soot on the fire side. With zero scape on the borders. Yeah.
And what about irrigation?
So we would, they would, we talked about.
We have irrigation, but I don't hire from that field. It's not a new irrigation.
But I mean, I, more so the infrastructure to, like, what are we, who's gonna be responsible for installing it?
They would, everything that.
So the perpetual maintenance of it, then, who's doing that?
So we would maintain that center portion.
But they do the rest?
They would do the rest. They would do their mowing, their, and destroying.
During the term of the lease.
If we did something like this, would we just say, okay, library, you snooze, you lose, you, you're out, or how would we?
Well, I think that's where like the details come. If we, you know, offer them a term of, you know, ten years with options to renew after that, we can say to the library, you know, hey, we've got this facility here, and we have signed a lease with them, and, you know.
I, who knows if that'll ever come to be, but I just, so I just.
And there's, and with that renegotiation, they also talked, they said really what they needed to make this feasible for them and their organizations are the two fields on the east. So if that ever came to fruition, and we wanted to go back and say, hey, we're gonna take the field on the west for, for this development or for whatever, you know, that's not outside of the realm of possibility.
Does that parking layout work, Nate?
And this is very, yeah, very high level, like, they're gonna go back and do some more engineering.
It's really, it's very, um, it, he said, Matt said he could tweak it a little bit. They might want to move it um, to the west a little bit, so they can adjust those bills to the east there.
It seemed like a very long str- I know we only get the one, you know, exit because of UDOT.
Yeah.
But the way it's laid out, it's just a really long, narrow.
It's like a diagonal, diagonal and having a drive, kind of a roundabout drive. There, there's ways to tweak. This is a very preliminary, it was just an idea.
It shows how many fields and how many parkings.
I mean, it's good. I mean, you know, those of us that live around this area know that when they're playing at the school, I mean, it's a madhouse over there, so.
Yeah, he, he was wanting to get two hundred parking stalls. That, that's, there's a hundred ninety-four there, so he was trying to get.
I just, I mean, I just look at that routing and know that when a game gets done and people are coming in and people are coming out, that's gonna be a mess, so.
So there, there's ways to tweak that a little bit.
Okay.
And we kind of indicated that, like, you know, that's the one access point from the UDOT, and without having to go back and do a traffic study, that's your one in and out of the whole place.
And the UDOTs are, they said that they will give us another.
With the canal and stuff.
Another thing, too, is that they also said that the pavilion and everything, we could add to our schedule, and we would be able to schedule that and reserve those for residents.
So they're gonna do some further refinements to the design. They're gonna add a walking trail along the outside of it with a connection to, we have an easement through the houses there that connects that neighborhood there. So, you know, we would, the city would construct that access point to the field and to the trail system. Um, and then, so they're gonna add that, and they're gonna talk with their kind of committee. We, I was going to bring Liam in at this point to talk about, you know, kind of what, what terms of the agreement would be, you know, and what we would want to see as far as like length, you know, what that agreement looked like and how it's sequenced. Um, they have money, they have money on hand right now so they could get started on it immediately. They're working on another one down in St. George, another facility similar to this, so.
Can you find out if there is a conflict?
Huh?
You know, with what, with what our kids around here are using?
And Mick was there, and Mick works with SWAT, and he, I mean, I can ask him again to clarify, but he didn't, he didn't say anything. Um.
So I think this, the city might see this as a best use scenario for this property, especially since it's been sitting for so long, and I don't see a lot of new libraries popping up overall.
Yeah.
Might be a trend that's trending down.
And we've had enough complaints about dirt, or piles and weeds.
So I think for me, you know, I, it'd just be nice to see more of the delineations of who's doing what, and who's responsible for what upfront and long-term.
Yeah.
Um, and then what happens after the ten-year, fifteen, twenty-year period, how it reverts, things like that, that we need to contemplate.
Um, the other thing was that I wanted to bring up, um.
And it went, I thought that was.
Like I said, I think it's good, and like I say, it's, it's great use. I like the playground in that area. I know, do we need detention on that site?
The whole, the whole site is detention.
Okay, so we'll have like a perimeter and. Okay, so we'll have like a perimeter and the Jones and Associates knows that. So they'll build that into the.
So the center, the drain line goes down. So we, we'd have really good drainage and, and if they backed up, it would, it would ruin the neighbor yards. It would just kind of go.
We talked to, I remembered, um, so I didn't know this, but originally this property was beaded to the city as green, for park space, for green space for this neighborhood. And talking with, you know, the parks committee, we felt that like this was kind of a good middle ground. It, you know, develops it into more than just a field. It's green space. The public has access to the walking trail and the amenities, you know, the, the playground and the pavilion. I mean, and we could take out, they, so we would have that whole strip. So we, they wouldn't install that smaller field there. So we could put whatever we wanted there, whether it was pickleball courts or, um, you know, whatever is on our whim. And then we also had asked them to, once we get this more firmed up and final, to do some sort of open house with kind of targeting that neighborhood to get their input and make sure that, you know, this jived with, you know, their, what they get, just get their insight into it.
Did, did you talk at all about one of these being able to convert into hockey? I know that's.
It's really hard to have a hot, outdoor hockey. I learned this last year.
Sorry.
Even how, how, how cold it got, it was still really hard.
Just right one in your backyard. So you have more?
I do. Sorry. I told you guys, I had a lot. Senior dinner was yesterday, um, Roberta's first senior dinner. And it was really well attended and the food was delicious. Thank you, Lyle. Thank you to everyone that showed up and helped to serve and helped with that. Um, I appreciate that. And I know what Roberta did as well. And then, um, I haven't written down here. So. Um, planning for Veterans Day on Saturday, November eleventh at Smith Family Park. And then have started to kind of preliminarily put pen to paper for our Christmas celebration. And I'm, um, I'd love to get your insight or thoughts on doing a breakfast with Santa at the, uh, senior center and having, um, maybe the choir from Fremont come and sing some Christmas carols. And then have Santa make an appearance and, um, serving breakfast. I feel like we could probably, you know, do a small like fee for people to attend, to cover the cost of breakfast. And then, um.
That would be a full community thing though.
Yeah, I mean, it would be open to everybody in the community.
I'm just thinking the senior center might be a little small if we open it up.
I think we definitely have to like, you know.
It might need to be over here at the back center.
Um, there was also one thing that I looked at. If that's not a direction that we want to go. Um, one of the cities around here does like a candy cane hunt and they have like candy canes around the park and they have kind of like little labels on them that, you know, you get a candy cane and then you get another prize. And so I thought that was a fun idea too. So. Just looking at kind of both of those things.
Throwing all sorts of ideas out there.
Yeah, it's good. Good changes.
Anything else? Quite a bit. Thank you. Okay, Janelle, are you ready to go next?
Yeah, I don't have as much as Katie because I missed the parks meeting yesterday. Um, I did attend the senior dinner yesterday. And yes, it was very good, Lyle. And, um, thank your wife as well. I know she did a lot of work. And then attended planning commission last week. Um, I won't be able to be to the meeting this Thursday, but thank you for all your work on the, on the ordinances we passed today. I know you guys have been patient with us and our questions and, um, done a good job on, on getting those just right. So, um, and then oh, just seeing if you guys need any help with like trunk or treat or anything, let me know.
I think we've all, I can talk about that on my, I guess. Do you want me to go if she's done?
I, we're just naturally handing this off. Josh.
So I know I was out of town on the last meeting. You guys had talked about, uh, the trunk or treat.
That's when you got the assignment.
Well, I knew it was my assignment. I've been working on it. Anyway, but as far as scheduling and everything else, so that's locked down on the thirtieth. So it is the day before Halloween. Great to have Lindsay back. She's able to put the flyers together. We got Andrew booked. Um, so we've got the information out. As it gets a little closer, I'll go around to, or we can talk and get to the schools and get that information out and businesses and encourage people to come. So, so we're a little ways out on that, but it's kind of set. We got the time, the date, everything.
Our department already knows and they're already, they want to be here.
So follow up there. We just encourage everyone to come with a card, decorate, have fun and it's a good event. So. Um, as far as other assignments, we've had quite a few sewer board meetings. I'm also on the long range planning committee. We've met, um, recently to go over, we're doing a lot of expansion over there. Um, a lot of great work going on. It's moving along quickly and proceeding. So um, a lot of other projects that kind of going on. So it's, it's been busy over there and it's been good. I think I did report, we did have our truth and taxation and we didn't have any public opposition, just some people with some questions and that was it. And so that all went through. So it's kind of what I've got to report.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Dave?
Just two more things. Now, the, uh, looks like we're going to have a far west team in the softball tournament.
Nice, thank you.
Um, yeah, that's coming along nicely. Um, Mayor Beasley and I spoke today and it looks like it should be, schedule should be coming up in the next few days. And, um, uh, so right now it looks like we have a full team and should be a good tournament. Friday, Saturday starts Friday around five P M. And.
Twenty ninth and thirtieth.
Thirtieth. Final game will go, uh, seven P M. On Saturday.
I have a small request for you. Will you get a good picture of the team? I noticed in the senior center, okay.
Not going to be there. I'm not out of town that, that weekend.
Last year.
So I will ask if we can get one.
Well, I noticed in the senior center, they have pictures of the baseball team from way, way, way back. And it's really cool to look at those and see like who was on it. And so if we can get one of those.
Does that mean we gotta get jerseys and everything?
And then we had a mosquito meeting last Monday. Everything's going well there. There seems like they're just kind of on autopilot at this point. So.
I hear them both still go by from time to time.
I don't know if y'all noticed though, the last three, four days they've come out.
It's been terrible.
Right?
Can't even be out past dusk. It's like.
Yeah, I don't know what the difference is, but that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Boyd. All right, uh, just first of all, CERT, they're going to do a, um, inventory this weekend. And so they'll be looking at what they have and then probably they'll have some requests of, of things to make sure we're up to date with our CERT equipment. Um, if anybody's wanting to, they're always looking for help. So. Um, that'll be this Saturday night. I think a lot of it will be uh, over here at this, at the old building. So in this building. So, and then Westwood Village as well. Um, we had our fire board meeting and, um, things are well. We don't have to do a truth and taxation this year. So that's a, that's a good thing. And, and the budgets are coming together. I'm on the budget committee and they really do a good job of, of doing a lot with the money that they have. So talking about possibly getting some ambulance service through the county instead of through Autumn City. And there's some things that are going on that could, could do well. So we'll see what happens with all that. Which would mean we'd, we would actually end up with an ambulance right here.
I thought we already did.
It's just the way it's built and how it's done. So anyway, but it would, it would be a little bit closer to home. A little, to touch a little bit on what the mayor said, there's been a lot of talk about AI, artificial intelligence and things like that. And replacing people with machines and robots. But there's, there's, in surveys and studies, there's a couple of those areas that that doesn't work and that's police and fire, emergency uh, responders. And so these cameras, these flock cameras will help with that intelligence, but that doesn't replace them. If that makes sense. And so, but it does make it so that we, we wouldn't have to have a, you know, a deputy sheriff at the entrance of the city all the time. Camera would watch those things and somebody that's in, coming out of far west or coming into far west at three o'clock in the morning could be somebody going home or it could be somebody looking to, to do not so good things. Yeah, there's, that's probably the best way to put it. So that a little bit touches a little bit with what and they've kind of all talked about that in, in their meetings. So that's really.
Did you attend the sheriff's expansion?
Yes.
Okay, did you want to expand on that at all?
I mean, they're, they are trying to do some, some building over there with, uh, kind of a mental health, um, section of the jail, I guess is what you'd call it. They've had some bad press on some prisoners dying over there. And so I think this would be, that's what they're trying to do is kind of have that mental health area expansion. So anyone that you think we, on that?
Okay, whatever you got, buddy.
That's what I got.
Okay. Thanks, Boyd. Okay, um, since last time I didn't have a lot to report on, so you're going to just kind of have to hang on here for a minute. So I won't take forever, I promise. There won't be one more thing, but there might be five. Okay, so starting off with, uh, WACOG, went to the housing subcommittee meeting. And we had a presentation from Washington Terrace. They're presenting, so every city is given a presentation. I get to in October of how we're, uh, satisfying our moderate income housing strategies. So what Washington Terrace is doing, there's a couple of things they're doing. Cause Washington Terrace is, they would say they're kind of built out. You know, Washington Terrace has been there. There's not a lot of undeveloped property in Washington Terrace. There just isn't. But there are properties. And so they're doing a lot of what they call infill development. So large enough properties, you know, not big enough for a large subdivision, but large enough for, you know, some homes. A lot of them do wind up being like, um, townhome type styles or, you know, row houses, those types of things. But it's not a lot. And some of them don't even come to the amount where they need a second entrance to them. But they are filling those things in and they are filling in, uh, whatever empty, uh, parcels they have. So that allows people who own property to develop it and all of those kinds of funds thing. They do have, what I found, and I want to find out what it is. They, basically when somebody comes in for a request like that, they have a calculation. So I'm sure that part of that calculation would be like, okay, power, sewer, stone, water, all of those kinds of things before they even consider it, does the calculation say that it can fit in that area? So I found that interesting. Um, another thing that they're doing is a, um, like a lot of areas are is a mixed use. The mixed use that they're doing is, uh, the residential over commercial. So that's the, you know, uh, live and work in the same building, basically. Or it accommodates both. There's a lot of this where there's, you know, you see commercial on the ground floor and residential above. They're doing a lot of that, especially in, you know, more populated areas. And so another possibility. We also, um, had a discussion on accessory dwelling units, ADUs. And all of the cities are challenged on getting them, you know, registered, identified. Some of them are doing it through business license. So they have to have a business license. We have to have a permit. Uh, we don't have any that we've done yet. And so one of the things they're doing is, okay, how do you possibly flag? You know, you, uh, you know, these ADUs and sometimes maybe the building inspector has noticed they're putting a new kitchen in. Well, you know, how many homes really need two kitchens unless they're doing that and then external entrance? So that at least flags these properties and then they follow up. Um, they don't want to make it where it's, you know, a punishment that they're doing this. We need to figure out how to ensure that they understand it's positive. You know, cause, uh, ADUs are probably one of the most positive modern income housing, because that allows people who own homes to stay in their homes. Cause they're able to augment their, um, income through renting out the basement or whatever it is they're doing. And also those that can't find regular, um, housing, because it's not that affordable. All this affordable housing talk is kind of, makes your head explode because none of it's affordable. At all, you know, but those are the most, some of the most affordable housing. So, uh, we're going to have further discussions on that and hopefully we can do something with that. So something sparked something with me and I may have mentioned this before in another form. But I'd like to form kind of a housing committee that, uh, wi- wi- within the city to where, and we'd meet periodically, maybe quarterly, whatever that might need to be. Uh, but I would hope we'd have like a couple of planning commission members. I called it something else last time around, but I think maybe focusing on housing might be a little bit better than just an advisory committee. Yeah. Yeah, land use advisory board. But this housing thing is more, because really one will drive the other, right? So planning commissioners, a couple of planning commissioners, a couple of, uh, council members and a couple of staff. I mean, between enough smart people, we can talk about these things where we can talk about our strategies. And what I, what I'm hoping for is that we're prepared for our next report, August first, twenty twenty four. Cause we've done it and we've made it the last few times, right? But it's one of those things where we're right at the end. But so if we're prepared, we can just go, this is what we're doing. Like what we've just achieved tonight with, uh, the wind ordinance that we passed. Let's note that and we put that on a report for next year. See, the other, uh, WACOG subcommittee I'm on is transportation subcommittee. Last Friday, we went out and we did fourteen field reviews. So plenty of cities that have plenty of projects. And, um, the city that happened to have the most proposed projects was far west city. We had five of the fourteen. And, um, I've got a, a list of them all, but it's ones we've discussed that we'd like and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, they're not going to, obviously we're not going to get funding for all of them, but maybe we can get funding for some of them. But we got to do what we got to do. Um, I'm going to reference this because some of what we have to do when we grade these is we have to uh, show how they improve mobility, improve safety, improve capacity, reduce congestion, promotes active transportation, improves air quality, how much is it needed and what is its priority? So based on numbers from everybody on the subcommittee, that's how they're going to decide how to distribute the funds. And I don't remember the exact amount of funds, but I'm absolutely sure that between the fourteen projects, there's not enough money for all fourteen projects. So.
So if we, if one of our projects gets partially funded through that, where do, like, are we responsible for applying, applying for other funds or going to?
Well, one of them, for instance, is one of them that we've already been awarded funding for. It's about on thirty three hundred. We also applied for this. So between those two, possibly we can get her done. And connect with Plain City that does have funding for their, um, part of North Plain City Road. Cause that needs to be expanded. Eventually it's, we're going to come far enough east where we got to replace bridges. And, um, if anybody wants to, I can take you and show you the maps of all the projects that, uh, we're doing. Um, but I'm sure you don't want me to go through all of those tonight, but I'm happy to with anybody who wants to. Let's see, Trails Foundation, uh, The Nut is coming up. The Nut is the Northern Utah Trail Fest. October sixth, seventh and eighth at North Park, North Fort Park in Eden. There's going to be, you know, all sorts of whatever trail type stuff. You know, you've got to have, wear your Sasquatch hat and have all, you know, there's running and biking and all that kind of good stuff. It's good to get out and, uh, do those kinds of things.
What dates?
October sixth, seven, eight. Should be a blast. Okay, um, grants. So in WACOG, they talked, the Wausau Front Regional Council came in and did their yearly announcement. They have this one I wrote down to make sure I knew how much, fifty million dollars available. Um, that's through all of the alphabet soup of, uh, grants that we can apply for. Like the S T P, the T A P, the C M A Q, the C D B D, the carbon reduction and some of the other ones. So there's plenty of those and I will pop it up on my phone if you want to know what those acronyms mean. But, uh, al- alternate transportation, uh, you know, config, uh, congestion management, all of those.
Can I add one thing to that?
Yes.
Should have gone with my report, but, um, I had put, requested that the pedestrian overpass on twenty seven hundred get put on the active transportation, um, funding priority list. And it's all by application and then they, you know, whether they approve it or not. It doesn't give you any funding, but. And it's all by application and then they, you know, whether they approve it or not. It doesn't give you any funding, but it puts you within consideration. And I, I heard back from Chris Chestnut at UDOT, um, with just a few little edits we need to make to that, to that application to have it in consideration. And one of them was, we need to have amend our active transportation plan.
Ooh, I have something on that, so.
I, we need to amend it to include that overpass within it, and so I just said, you know, it's, we're in the process, it's draft. And so if we can, if our trails committee could work on that or if we could.
I have something better.
Okay, okay.
Much better.
Okay.
Even though I love our active, uh, trails committee. Reason I say this. So the next thing on my next line right here, so, but thank you. Um, Chris Willsteed with Bike Utah, he's helped us out with some of these things before. He got ahold of me and he's offering assistance in updating our active transportation plan for free. How's that? That's pretty good. They're good. So um, he's willing to do it if we're willing to accept it and I said, absolutely, we will. So we will get with our um active transportation uh trails committee and talk about it and get with him and uh we'll ensure that that's part of that. How's that for timing?
That would be wonderful.
We're just doing too good of a timing and passing things off one thing to another, aren't we? Um, one more thing, kind of along those lines is, it's amazing, uh, every once in a while, people reach back. And so I guess sometimes when you yell from the mountaintops from time to time, people actually answer. So Blake Moore's office, our congressman, Blake Moore, uh, reached out and they're offering us some help with the Bureau of Reclamation and the Canal Company because um we put in an application for, you know, access on the canal. And as of right now, that application from the Bureau of Reclamation has been denied. And they found out about that and they would like to help us, um, possibly turn that around, cuz we're not ready to say or take no on that yet. One of the reasons they denied it was, and they do have a valid reason, is right now they're lining the canal, right? They're doing a lot of work lining that with concrete, okay? Active transportation and trails and all that and construction don't get along together. I get that. We would avoid doing that. You know, but then the uh second excuse they had is they're afraid people will fall in the trap. And I think we all understand that, you know, they also, and everybody I've talked to, including Chris and all these others, um, and I was talking to the Wasatch Front Regional Council, Ben Wuthrup and Hugh, I've been talking to all those guys and they're like, well, we've done this down at Jordan River Parkway, some of these other canals. Um, they put.
They're all over, they're all over.
They're all over the place. They put them next to Raging Rivers, you know, and all that kind of stuff, so that one's kind of um, I'll call the less tweak on that, so we're, we're not, we're not done with that yet and I, I would probably never give in.
There was a really good article on KSL that talked about, yeah, ki- tying trails to the canals and there's a, there's some um, energy behind the, the UDOT Transportation Commission to incentivize developing canals into trail systems as well, so, um. Yeah, that, there's, I think that the Bureau of Reclamation is gonna be hard pressed to be in a stalemate for long.
Right. Okay, um, speaking of Wasatch Front Regional Council, you know how annually they do the, the big plan? They, they like to come around and visit certain cities. Well, they reached out and they are, uh, and they basically reserved our senior center for um November thirteenth, it's a Monday. And so we're, we're hosting them this time around so we can uh put our input into the major plan of the Wasatch Front Regional Council, which has to do with all of the things that we do, so planning commission, please be aware of that and come to those kinds of things. It has to do with everything from uh zoning, roads, all, all of our assignments, basically, uh, are in there somewhere, so. Uh, we're gonna be doing that and then um Bonavista is next week for me, even though I'm out of town, I'll probably do it remotely. And then my final, uh, one more thing, but my final thing is November thirtieth, we're gonna have Christmas dinner at the Timber Mine, so. Put, put that on your, we did get that, right? Lindsay just, I didn't announce that too loud. Yes. No, Andrea got that all arranged and we're set and ready to go on that, so. Somewhat similar to last year. It is after Thanksgiving. No, it's not December, but, you know. I think anything after Thanksgiving is the Christmas season, isn't it?
Yep.
Some would say anything after Labor Day is the Christmas season.
Nope.
After Thanksgiving it is. Well, Black Friday's the day after, so. Okay, and we have one last motion to consider.
I'll second it.
Okay. Dave and Boyd, motion and second, all in favor, say aye. We're adjourned. Thank you all.